Days in the vine, which is pretty amazing when you look at other municipalities that serve a demographic that we serve, a very poor area, but we have money and we're online. Our goods and services are about midway to what other places charge and our salaries are about midway to what other people pay in a similar situation. So I think we're in a pretty good state. One of the things, and I've been talking with Glenn about this, I think we need to start paying attention to our aging group. I'm not looking at you Janet, but there's...
I appreciate that.
Ether Janet.
But you know, we've got a lot of people that are approaching retirement age and I think that it would be wise of us, just as we've prepared for all these things in our budget, we're financially prepared, I think we also ought to start looking hard at who's going to fill those spots and you know, have them work side by side with the people that are preparing to retire and you know, we just don't want to be caught short. We want these people to know. I approached this, I've had somebody that worked for me for almost 40 years and I told her, I asked her the other day, I said, "I'm not trying to push you out the door, but at the same time, I don't want to be left short." And she says, "I have no options." And so that was reassuring. I don't want her to leave, but you know, we all love her. But anyway, so I'd just like for us to start looking at, these are good jobs and we don't want to, we don't want to outsource these jobs. We want these salaries to stay in Dillon and so they'll buy our goods here and go to restaurants here. But I'd just like to see us look a little harder at who's going to follow. And Glenn, he's looking at like three years, two years?
Two years.
Two years.
Are the capabilities there though Dr. Watson?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to, I think we've got good people that can run it. Water sewage, I mean those are really well-paying jobs, but we, you know, we just need to educate up and get these people to run those positions.
Well, right now, don't get in the rut.
No, I've been working for them. Shoot, almost two years, working on a plan for health insurance for retirees that we'll talk about. Now that we're on the state plan, the people plan, someone retires from the city can take that insurance with them. Previous provider we had, we couldn't do that. But if they take it, it's at 100% their cost. So I've been working on some things for those that meet certain guidelines to retire and as of right now, we've probably got six or seven who could actually retire from state retirement. Have either in police department of 25 years or more, on the subterranean retirement system, have 28 years or more. So we've got six or seven people who could walk away today and retire, not worrying about health benefits, because I think a lot of them are still kind of seeing what we're going to do there. But you know, if all of them, and I don't think all of them will, I don't think everybody that's capable or able to retire are going to retire in the next year. But I do see it happening in the next two, three years. Benny could retire. I could retire. Janet could retire.
You don't love to be...
But it is something to look in the...
Yeah.
Well, then the people...
Let's go get coughed out for it.
And that was one of the reasons I told you all last year what my intentions were, so you could plan.
We appreciate that. Speaking of the retirement, where are we up there?
I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it, if you want to do something for those that retire, to make it as cheap as possible for the city. Because you've got, I'll use myself as an example. If I retired today and we had something in place, I'll be 60 at the end of this month. Are you going to spend $36,000 on me over the next five years for health insurance? Or if somebody in the police department who can retire with 25 years of service and be 53, are you going to spend that much over...
12 years.
12-year period. So just trying to come to those numbers where it's fair, but also not put the city out for a lot of money at one time.
Are you trying to have, were you trying to have some numbers to be implemented in the budget?
I would want to have it completed so you could implement it in this upcoming vote. And also have it where, you know, in the police department from June of, I mean July of 2023 out to June of 2030, seven years, to show you what could possibly happen there. Same thing on the general fund side, water and sewer, kind of break it down so you have an idea.
Okay.
The only other thing that was kind of, I asked Glenn to give us our foot, what it would cost as someone that would want to start a subdivision, you know, what that linear foot's going to cost, you know, for infrastructure, water sewage, electric, storm drainage, side blocks, curbs, you know. And I thought that we had something and I don't know that we do, we just, we've kind of got it. We had something years ago and I think we ended up getting rid of it, if memory serves me correctly, was that if someone built a subdivision, we would give back at the end of each year, if you had 10 houses or 20 houses built in a subdivision, each time or each one of those houses, when they were sold, a portion of taxes would be repaid back to the developer. But that didn't go well. I never really had any developments to really do it, but it just didn't go well. And after you had talked to me, there was an article out of Conway that talks about something similar to that. And what Conway was doing, and I don't think they do anymore in new developments, is they've done something over a 20 or 30-year period and it was something that they thought was not as invested versus what the city of Conway has today.
Well, in...
Now, you're talking Conway versus Dillon too. Developments, a whole lot bigger and quicker there. I don't know. I'm not smart enough to figure all that out. But I think that we need to take the initiative about maybe putting some, you know, mild infrastructure in an area and try to develop something. And we need to look at it from a standpoint, especially out there around the school, we need to look at it from a standpoint that it might not bring us those revenues immediately, but long-term, if it starts the interest out there, the people start to develop the land, then we're going to be in a much better place as far as our downtown revitalization. I don't know how anybody can look at building a place right now, but it probably won't be that way right on long. You've got 4.5% interest and you've got construction costs of $175, $180 a square foot. You're going to put a lot of money for it. That is a real big house. Anyway, that's all I have. I think that this council has done a great job of setting up future councils to be able to look forward in our agenda of improving the standard of living in Dillon and the safety and enjoyment. Got a lot of things that we do here that are a lot of fun. And I have an opportunity to talk to a lot of people from around this area that don't live in Dillon. I have one lady that was afraid to come to Dillon and see me because she just, her whole family says, "Let us know when you get back." But it's just not that way. We have issues, but it's really a pretty safe place for her. Anyway, that's all I have. Glenn? In your, kind of love night, back there in the school. In your packet, you know, we were talking about projects last month and got thinking, we do have a lot of projects going on. In your packet, I supplied you with a list of projects that we're doing right now. And there's more than just this. These are our bigger projects. The total of 16 projects from different categories, from pump stations to water meter and sewer grade of capacity upgrades, stormwater, what we're calling the farmer's market area, renovations of the two buildings that we've got for police and visitor center, recreation upgrades, demolition of properties. And I broke down and started adding these things up where we're getting either grant money through the state, whether it be CDBG or grant money that we got the state this year from the state allocations of their budget and/or ARP funds. And I started adding these numbers up. 10 million, over $10 million of possible funds there that we need to spend, that's coming from other areas to us. Not saying that there's, we also have our own money in some of these projects because there are some matching portions there. But I thought that was interesting, thought you might want to see that. And also in this report, gave you an update as how much has been completed, if it's got a contract, who the contractor was, what the funding mechanism was, and then, you know, possible dates of when things would be completed. So I thought that was interesting. And then we've talked in the previous months and years really about the logistics center on Highway 34, whether or not they should be annexed, how can we annex them. Over the last six or seven months, Benny and I and Janet have been talking with Barbara Frey, who rents that property, with those folks and their attorneys. And then after talking with them and Janet doing research, I submitted a memo that she gave me concerning the possible annexation. And in that, I also gave you copies of the state law that she was referring to. So Janet, if you want to talk about that, this is...
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. What it basically boiled down to is when we ran into the fee in lieu of the taxes, the agreement has tied it up for, and I haven't read the memo since I gave it to Glenn.
About 30 years.
For about 30 years, about 25. There's some things you can tack on years. Even if they were annexed, and it is my opinion, they would need to agree, the city would still not benefit because it would not change the system that's already in place with the fee in lieu.
Um, the, what I, I know that our ISO rating is better than the county. And what I would like to look at, if possible, is to look at what the insurance bill is. And if it's $100,000, then you know, or they would save $100,000. And I don't have any idea what they want to say. Say if they could save $100,000 if they had a fire station out there with an ISO rating of four A as opposed to the counties, which is six or seven.
I'm sure.
You know, say they'd save $100,000. So we'll say to them, okay, we'll look at this formula every year. We'll take 75%. We'll put, we'll put station out there, a fire station, combination fire station, police station, fire rescue, and they'll save $25,000. We'll say, we'll make 75, they'll save 25 just on their saves. I know that it's not going to be that great of an amount, but to me, if you've got 4 million square feet under the roof out there, you're paying a lot of money because with all that, you know, what's under the roof, I mean, I just can't imagine what their inventory is at any given time. So they've got to be paying a lot of money in insurance to make sure that, you know, that doesn't burn down. Don't know. Maybe I'm wrong. But at least then, it is not forcing you to be a part of us, I'm enticing you to be a part of us. And so then if other places go in out there, you know, they... I think one of the biggest issues is not just the fee in lieu, Barbara Frey doesn't own the property. I understand. They rent the property. But they own the buildings and they own the ownership. The property doesn't burn. But they don't, they don't have, they don't have the authority to annex. The property owner has to do the things.
If I could ask, I've got the ordinance here 5-1-35, and it's talking about annexation required to access to the city utilities. And I'm going to read this just short. It says, "Properties located outside of the city limits are required by council policy to agree to annexing to the corporate limits in exchange for access to city-owned utilities. No permits will be issued until proper papers are signed." Now, I understand that we got the fee in lieu and you had quoted the state law. It doesn't say that industrial should be exempt.
I can answer that. The council has an ordinance subject to an addendum, Mr. Bathe put on it, and that addendum said that it can't be done without the owner's consent.
But that only applies to the 10-foot on both sides of the road?
No, it applied to the entire piece. The whole point of it was, we want to annex the rest of it without their agreement.
Well, if I can ask the code enforcement officer, is that how you read or interpret the ordinance being? Because it changed ownership and the utilities, when it changes ownership like that, they're supposed to annex into the city limits.
I understand that.
I'm not arguing the point, I'm just trying...
We all agree with you.
If that's the case, we got to update the ordinance.
And I don't agree because we made a different agreement with Mr. Bathe than we do with most people. He negotiated an agreement evidently with the council, what year was it?
2000.
He negotiated an agreement and had a typed-out addendum that required three things and that was part of the ordinance. I understand when it was voted on because it was given to me as part of the ordinance. You are correct that normally they sign that and that is a way to annex a man. And we've actually been looking at that and we're going to start recording them at the courthouse. But that's not what we did with Bathe. There was a negotiation that took place that resulted in an addendum to that ordinance and that, all of that, that tied our hands in ways the general form doesn't.
Negotiated up with the city because I was never aware of that.
That was part of the ordinance. It was attached to the ordinance.
Did we ever have a sit-down with owners? I mean, I don't know anything about, did you sit down with them?
I did and that's what they agreed to and that was a part of the ordinance. When y'all passed the ordinance, that was, the addendum was a part of the ordinance. But I think it's totally different in that, based on state law, since there's a fee in lieu that was negotiated with the county and the property owner prior to the building being built, prior to them wanting our services, the fee in lieu takes precedent of what we do. Because in the state law, it says that municipalities don't get anything out of, like I said, they can agree to annex today, but we could not tax them.
And we, if they had been in the city at the time, we would have had a voice in that multi-county industrial park. But under the multi-county industrial park, they determine the fee in lieu and where it goes. So Dillon County has already entered into agreements with other counties saying where all the money goes and the city wasn't part of it.
And that's my point. And I'm going to let it go actually, is that the county and the neighboring counties were receiving over $140,000 in taxes, about the rate, Glenn?
It is somewhere in that boat.
And the city of Dillon is only two tenths of a mile from this place and we get zero.
So that was part of the agreement that allowed Harbor Freight to come in first place.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm not, I'm just saying...
Well, all those properties in the industrial park are going to be tied to fee in lieu.
Right.
We have, the only way we can have a say is if the county invites us to, like, terminate.
But in honesty, the county can't bring new jobs here because our capacity of our wastewater treatment plant is matched up. So you know, it goes one hand to the other.
It should be a working relationship.
It just, it bothers me really to know that the city doesn't get anything. How do we grow? How do we grow as a town? That's the big issue I have. Where are we on the capacity of our city?
We are based off of allocation, meaning what we've promised people.
We got to get up to 2.4 to...
Whatever, yeah. And in fact, Purdue, we'll use Purdue as an example. Purdue is guaranteed 2.1, 2.2 million. The last seven months, they're averaging about 1.3 million.
Wow.
Yeah. Janet and I, Janet and I did those numbers this afternoon. All right. Well, last time it dropped like that, you know, we started getting increased concentration, you know, sugar watching that. That's where we got our seed. We are. But you know, allocation-wise, we're about 98% allocated. What we treat on a normal basis, when I say normal basis, no rain, things of that nature, we're probably at 80% what we treat.
Pretty critical.
Can I, can I step in? I'm really confused. How do you, if you already got a mortgage in place like, you have some of the elders things here, then how do you agree to an addendum outside party?
Because at that time, we had to have that 10-foot roadway for Barbara Frey was going somewhere else.
Yeah.
Is that pretty much it? No, I mean, we got the 10-foot on each side of the road to getting out to the interstate.
Right.
That was, that was the purpose in 2020. There were several properties that agreed to that, only if we only annex 10-foot of their frontage.
And agreed, they made them annex in any of the years.
The addendum that's stated, it says, "Without written consent from an owner of this track at the time of annexation." So that means any track?
I don't remember the year that we passed that portion into ordinance.
It was added on April 9, 2012, which...
No, that was, that was the annexation of the 10-foot portion of those properties on Highway 34. The ordinance that Mr. Deller's talking about, you have the copy?
But was that an addendum?
It was passed in 2006.
2007?
Yes, I think so.
Is the viable, viable for a vote from the council?
Y'all voted on it and passed the ordinance subject to the addendum because what happened is...
Now, he's talking about something entirely different on 10-foot on each side.
That was part of the addendum of the, of the...
This is written consent from owners of this track. All of it.
Well, it was the track that the ordinance dealt with. So you have to look at the ordinance, which I think, I think we provided John one a few months ago.
They're talking about...
And it's got the sheet they signed.
The roadway, it's not a roadway. I mean, it's not a...
See, I thought it was that too.
It's just property that, of their frontage that they, they have frontage of their property 10 feet wide that they agreed to annex. They didn't agree to annex anything behind the 10-foot.
And for them to do that, we had to agree not to force annexation without owners permission.
You agreed to their addendum, which pretty much said that.
And the owner of that track was an attorney who knew exactly what he was doing and negotiated it so that...
But the council at that time, if they had the opinion of that, then how did the wording get in there, shall or not annex any additional property? I mean, where'd that come from?
Any additional property, any additional property that was annexed that was not a part of the 10-foot.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. That was part of the...
But shall not, unless you get...
I'm glad QT came. But if I'm QT, we've got to change this. They could put a lawsuit on us.
No, because we're not forcing them to annex.
Still, you didn't, if they find out the logistics center's not paying the taxes...
No, they would want it because they want, they want the police protection, they want the fire protection.
The logistics center's giving it for free. They ain't having to pay for it.
The county's going logistic.
Yeah. If they have a situation out there, we going out there.
We can go if they call us.
Right. Logistics center's paying for our services. The logistics center's not.
Let me, let me...
But I do agree with the incentive.
Let me talk a second. Now, our situation in 2007, when this county was dead on its back, no industry, and this was an opportunity to do this, we were, we were glad somebody was interested. And look what it has brought. Look at the flow of that development. I would love to get those annexed. I would, I would love to have that. I'd love to have some taxes off of it. I think right now, Harbor Freight probably employs 1,800, 2,000 people. I mean, this is huge. I mean, this was huge. The only way we could get it was to bring Marion and Marla in with it. That's why they get taxes. We needed infrastructure there. They had to bring that natural gas, you know, I think that was a billion or so dollars. I mean, there was a lot of infrastructure to put out there in that spot.
I wouldn't hear that sound.
No, I know it, but I...
The city paid for the sewer line to be running out there so we could get it.
We sure did. We bought a... Spent about $200,000.
How much just been...
We spent about $200,000.
$250,000. Or commitment and... Reuniversity back.
Oh, we got nothing back.
You got nothing back?
Nope, nope. Well, did we not get anything back? Well, indirectly, you get any... And you got to look at the big picture is what I'm saying.
And I am. That's why I was up here having a conversation.
The big picture is, is we've got, we've got 1,600 people that are employed out there. But it's not...
It's not all Dillon County residents.
Someone needs to sit there.
And that's our fault. That's our fault.
I don't know if it's our fault or not, I'm...
Well, it is our fault.
But I'm just saying.
Well, not directly our fault.
But I agree with what you say. Let's try to find a way, if it's...
It ties something.
It ties. They're giving our services for free.
I mean, but can you put a package together for something?
I mean, again, I don't think, I'll tell you what they told me. They're not, they're not interested, they being the property owner, are not interested in...
Well, if it saves them a lot of money.
It's not saving the property owner, no.
It will for the building and for the content of the building.
I understand, but listen to what I, there's two different entities in this. Property owner, Barbara Frey.
Two different insurance policies.
Two, I don't know about insurance policies.
Content.
My point being...
Rent, renter insurance has a lot of...
The property owner, this...
Barbara Frey's bad. Barbara Frey's got a triple net lease on that building that pays everything.
Right. So that's why the property owners don't care if they say no insurance for them.
Right, I know that.
The property owners was simply better than annexation. The property owners was simply better than annexation.
The loo and loo were, and that was one of our discussions when we started talking about the sewer line out to the middle school. We're making sure, and I hope, we're not going to run into this ever again. We failed probably as a council at that time.
Well, somewhat, because we should have looked at it after so many years.
Again, forget about the ordinance front that, that was annexation. It's all about fee and loo. We, we have, we cannot annex, I mean, you can, but you're not gonna get anything out of annexation.
And if they don't seem interested, I was part of the conference call, and Glenn presented to them the various ways it might benefit them. And I got the same impression I think Glenn did, is I will be very surprised if they consent to anything.
Give a Janet under.
They're not gonna give us what their insurance costs. They're not gonna even give us anything.
If they have a triple net lease, they're gonna, they're gonna pay the property tax, insurance, and everything, upkeep of the building, the whole damn yard. Harbor Freight can make that decision. They would, they would pay the property tax.
The property owner has.
If under triple net lease, Harbor Freight would pay that. Now, if it's gonna save them.
You're absolutely not correct, because this is out of their words, is they not gonna annex, the property owner's not gonna annex unless Harbor Freight pays it, and they're saying they're not.
That's right, that's under triple net.
But they're saying they're not paying the property tax.
If they save money on the insurance, why not?
I understand, but they already said they wouldn't pay it.
One thing before we leave the subject, and I would ask being, like, weak spewers doesn't have anybody occupying the building right now. If somebody, a, a industry was to come there, does the city, are they able to annex and get taxes off of them, or are we the same?
It's not contiguous.
It's not? Just the suvius over here, the old plan?
The suvius is.
Okay.
They, they are. But, I mean, Harbor Freight, again, the letter was sent to the property owners, IPD sat, who in turn reached out to Harbor Freight and said, deal with this, we're not, because we're not annexing.
That's correct.
And Harbor Freight says, if we annex, we've got to absorb that cost. And you know, industries, they there to make money. And he said they wouldn't do it.
Listen, they benefit of this.
I'm not saying they wouldn't benefit, they just said they wouldn't do it.
Their council.
And then, again, once you get into the portion of fee and loo, it's, it's null and void. They can annex, but they don't have to pay taxes because they are set for their taxes for the next thirty years.
And we're two tenths of a mile, we giving the services or something else happening, we getting their first.
Probably so. Anybody got any other questions on that?
Well, are we gonna change the ordinance?
You can change it, you just, you just.
That where it says, consent industrials, I mean.
It's not that, I don't think that ordinance is a problem. It's the addendum that we agreed to. And it's also the fee and loo and the multi-industrial county parts, those two statutes.
I've been getting phone calls and emails from Miss Tanya Haddock. I wonder if you remember that name? She came before council in two thousand nine about the J.B. Martin development into senior living. They are running short on funds. She was under the, under, under the understanding in two thousand nineteen that the state and the city was gonna help them with funds. The city said we would if the money came from the state.
We were a pastor.
We were a pastor. And now, that did not happen. She would like for her and her team to come and meet with council to talk about this, and you're interested.
Well, as far as I know about the property is that FEMA has awarded money.
Hood.
I mean, hood, excuse me, hood. And I'm just curious, it's been four years, and nothing's even started on the property. So, I would agree for her to come and explain to us, you know, she's wanting money, why haven't you been, they already started on the property?
What they got money by the end of?
Well, they are, let me see if I can find where I put it. They are, printed off an email she had sent me. I just got them right.
At the same time, they see us wanting to be a part of a development, senior living.
They got a word to go in, like, they just started working on the.
It's a twenty million dollar project. About two hundred and fifty thousand is what they're looking for.
A lot that they want on money first, before they start working on the project, they wanted it awarded.
Here, and I printed this out, we, did we join them out? I printed this out today where I found this email from January. It's a twenty, twenty million dollar project. Hood, they're getting two point five million. Some kind of federal equity, they're getting six point two. State equity, they're getting three point three. Another federal equity, they're getting two point nine. Another state, two point eight. Abandoned building equity, two point one, which, these are tax credits, is my understanding. I'm not sure what a sponsor loan is for three hundred and eighty, and then they've got in there a city loan for two hundred and fifty, which comes to the total of, you know, twenty million, five hundred thousand dollars. They're looking to fill that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar gap. Now, doing, talking with her for the last two or three months and finding out different information, I was under the impression, and y'all may or may not be, I was under the impression the property was gonna be given to. Did y'all know anything different?
No.
Well, I'm now being told that the property that the, I hate, don't use the wrong term, you know, the group that's in charge of that property, the local historic foundation of J.B. Martin, are selling the property to them for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Now, that money that they get when they sell the property to them is supposed to be portions that they use to go back into the auditorium to buy things and then things of that nature. I suggested that to the local group, tell them you give it to them, there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings. This project may not happen without two hundred and fifty. If you don't sell it to them and just donate it to them, you now you're only talking seventy thousand. There may be something, other avenues that could do. Now, I'm not a part of negotiation, I just told them my opinion. But, Miss Haddock would like to come, and I would suggest not to have that irregular council meeting, just because it could take forever or a long period of time, but if y'all want me to, I can schedule it the last Monday of this month. Obviously, it'd be.
Okay. I mean, they can build a brandy hotel, or two more five E and, maybe they can build a brandy hotel.
I will follow you out of date to kinda get them to us, and, you know, can, whatever questions you may have, you can ask of them at that time and kinda go from there.
Did Mr. Berry just tell me, say they got a donation?
Three hundred and seventy thousand.
How much was it?
Three hundred and seventy thousand.
To do stuff within the.
What did you just say?
Can I interject some information on that property? I actually sat on the board for a period of time with the Dillon Historic School Foundation. They are in shambles for the group. When Cadence with Tanya Haddock approached us with this deal, it's a wonderful deal, they needed to get some bonding and things through the state to finish that deal. It got held up in the state at some level, and that was well over a year ago. We hadn't heard anything until somewhat recent times that all of a sudden, oh, now we're, we're gonna be able to push this through again. But it's sat almost two years that there was no movement on the state level. During that time, we had an agreement that was sent from Cadence to the DHSF about taking over the property. We would have agreed to leasing the auditorium for a period of like seventy-five years for a dollar a year, but they had to restore the auditorium, along with the rest of the building. They kept the building, everything else, we just had a lease agreement. DHSF decided, no, we don't like that anymore. We wanna do things our way. And it has turned into an absolute disaster that they cannot figure their way out of a paper bag anymore. And the whole deal is, has gone absolutely around in circles to this kind of mess. So, where it is, I guess they did get that money from, from that donor, but that money was specifically earmarked to go toward auditorium equipment, lighting, sound, electrical items, things of that nature. They cannot use it on the actual auditorium itself. They have no funds to restore that auditorium and never did. They're, they're dwindling down to their last bit of money, period, for that building overall. And they're in bad shape, and now they can't even figure out what to do.
Did y'all give them the property?
We did not gift them the property. They were going to take the property with the understanding that they would restore the entire building, including leasing the auditorium to us for a dollar a year, in lieu of any money. But because nothing else is happening with the building, now all of a sudden, well, we need to fix the auditorium because that's the one thing that matters. Now they want this money from Cadence. Nobody's gonna pay a hundred and eighty thousand, they're not gonna pay eighteen thousand dollars for that auditorium, as much work as it means. That's the input.
She can come talk. Glad that we could be a good.
But I'd like for all of you to be there as possible. We may can do it in the first Monday of March if needed. Last month, I brought you some bids on golf course renovations of greens and building a new maintenance shop. As we were going through the bids, and recognized that they were over thirty thousand. Wanted to make sure our code, we following our code, so after meeting Janet, I was in the office and looking, and Miss Drell was correct. Anything over thirty thousand must be by our own code. Required to be advertised formally and to be done through sealed bid process. So, that was correct. However, on the agenda tonight, that was done the following week on those two projects which are on the agenda. So, let you know that. And then the last thing that we talked about all in all for several months is resurfacing of Main Street, and when that was gonna take place. I went to a meeting Wednesday afternoon with DOT, they had what is known as a pre-construction conference. I was invited, Stephanie Mitchell with DCA was invited, along with the contractor, Palmetto Corporation, who's gonna be doing the resurfacing. Didn't know until I got there that it's not just Main Street they're resurfacing. There's several roads in this particular contract throughout the county that Palmetto's doing under this particular contract. And they have until June of two thousand twenty-four to complete these projects. So, when they started the, the conversation about their contract, things of that nature, I interrupted him and said, I'm here to ask one question and, and for one answer. When do you plan to start resurfacing Main Street so we can prepare to do what we're doing? Explained to him what our plans were. And he said, truthfully, sometime probably next spring, but I can guarantee you it won't be before June of this year. So, Stephanie, am I correct in that?
He said, possibly, he's, possibly after May, but more likely after September, so, when they would start. And so, then, you know, that doesn't give them much time to do everything, so probably like Glenn said, in the spring.
So I need counsel tonight. We've talked about it, it's been passed. I have applied for an approachment permit for the state to take out these, these center planners that y'all passed several months ago. And, you know, from a staff standpoint, there are going to be discussions with another way of maybe not doing it, if it hadn't been voted on, if you have voted on to take them out. We've got to go ahead and start planning, because I don't wanna wait and they come in here and start, and we say, oh, you gotta stop them. They're not gonna stop and wait on us. So, I'm not saying I need, I wanna call it a vote of confidence, but we're going forward based off what y'all had said. If y'all wanna do something different, I'd suggest this would be the time to talk about it.
Pardon?
We voted on it.
Well, let's, let's, you, let's do what we voted on, because I'm fine with that.
I mean, that's what, most of the people that have businesses downtown, that's what they wanted, that's what the, the whites want, so, and that's kinda how we voted on it. I mean, hopefully, the people who wanna upkeep the buildings better than what they look now, because I got a feeling when them areas are taking out, it's just gonna make the buildings look that much worse. So, well, let's go ahead and do it.
But do you also realize, as I went back and looked, this is from three oh one at Kings, in Maine, back this direction. Those are the, the center planners I'm talking about.
The end of each one, yes.
On the other, on the east side of three oh one, we still have center planners there, but they're not a part of this because DOT's not resurfacing that area. They're only resurfacing from the railroad track to three oh one at Kings. They're not going across. I spent a lot of time, that's all I have at this point.
Well, my question is, before we get off the plan, is that, is that gonna be bid it out?
What? Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get, I want to, and I haven't really talked to them yet, so, I'm hoping we can work a deal out with DCA with the money they got. Because if they can get it done and pay for it and contract, and Stephanie, not putting you on the spot to answer, but, you know, we can discuss that. It'd be a whole lot easier for us, and less time consuming, because this time of the year is, we're gonna start seeing grass grow and things of that nature and spending the time doing that, so, I'll let you know at next, at our next meeting, our next meeting.
But I thought we agreed on poos to remove.
Unless you got money to resurface that portion of.
So you're saying you can't remove those?
Oh, we can remove them, but the state's not resurfacing. We'd have to find the money to.
Half million dollars, bro.
They don't require you to resurface it?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
They don't.
Yeah, they are requiring.
But it is, when it gets ready to be resurfaced, then we'll go look at it. Now, what are we gonna do about landscaping? We need to go ahead and vote on that?
No, because it's not on DSA.
We don't need to waste.
Well, I think the last time we talked about landscaping is.
We were waiting on.
Everything, working on, working on providing us information.
I understand what that, that was the last meeting.
Yes, and the procurement process is painful and long and involved. Look at Janet shaking her head, and legally binding. So that's where I'm at with that. I do have a couple things that I'm working on right now, trying to figure out the exact scope of the work, so then we can put out a request for bids and that kind of stuff. And depending on the estimate of it, is how it has to be bid out, just like what y'all have.
Our group, so we'll present.
So what you're saying, Glenn, it's really not gonna make any difference, but in the scheme of things, by the fall, we might be in position to.
Do, at, if, if I may, at the DOT meeting, they did say that if the landscaping that needed to be removed, really needed to be removed no later than the end of this year, so that everything would be prepared for starting at the beginning of next year.
All right, one more. The C funds that were allocated for the planners, am I right in saying?
No, C funds were allocated to resurface the portion between three oh one and the railroad track. No, C funds were allocated to resurface the portion between three oh one and the railroad track. From what, from what we did six, seven months ago, when we took out the center island, we had to resurface from three oh one to railroad track, C funds were gonna do that for us. But now that the state has got that in the contract, they're not doing it.
We can't apply that to some other street here?
I can ask them, but I don't.
Tell them to go to Davis Street.
They're over there now.
They're doing that?
Yeah, they work on Davis.
Oh, they've already put it all in there? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Um, Janet, finance, and maybe for a second time, y'all all review this. Have any issues with?
You got any questions?
Any questions for Janet? You know, uh, we, we got any issues that you're aware of? Would y'all like to just kind of pass over that? We've got all this information set up, we can read it just this time.
If you got any questions about anything, please ask.
Yeah.
Please ask.
Any questions, I'm never gonna look through that.
You don't have any?
I've, I've been with them like, who can whip on this?
Appreciate it.
Lisa. I'm gonna sit down and make it short. How about that instead of standing up and doing it? St. Patrick's Day celebration is well underway, March eleventh, from eleven to three. It'll be proudly presented by Palmetto Dentistry this year. I'm excited about having them join in and provide sponsorship dollars for that. Uh, we're doing the chili cook-off at the Humane Society. Uh, the Jeb McMahon will be there, carnival rides, food trucks. It's gonna be a great event.
That's huge. Those kids will come out and listen to that.
It's coming downtown instead of at the Rosa?
Yeah, yes.
And hopefully the weather be better than we had last year because it rained the whole time during the.
Lynn, it's not hopefully, it is gonna be. It's supposed to be, exactly. Uh, so I'm looking forward to working with Calvin and Dentistry as well as the Humane Society. Uh, Kevin with Parks and Rec. And I know I've got a couple of the food trucks are actually gonna be, um, part of the chili cook-off also. So we're kind of mixing it up just a little bit. Celebrate Maine, we are starting to work on that. Um, we've got the Chocolate Chip Band that are gonna be here and then I'm bringing them back. One of my favorite entertainers from the city of Coco when I was there recovered in the Kazubi Kazoo Show. His family owns Kazubi Kazoos, uh, it's a family oriented kind of production. So I think that'll definitely shake that up just a little bit. Um, murals, Tommy Simpson, the RIN will be completed by the end of February. Uh, so hopefully we will be able to get some media publicity on that, um, with maybe WBCW and Dylan Harold. So we'll do an unveiling. I'll have a date soon, but he has promised by the February. Uh, Jason Best, Lockton Courtyard, uh, will begin on March twentieth. That particular mural and the community will be invited to interact with that mural work on March twenty fifth. So it's coming up in March and we'll have a little more with that. Uh, Downtown Merchants Association in February, we did the May display, Good Love Hot Hook Shop. It went okay. Uh, we'll continue to explore other options and things that can bring businesses to the established downtowns. Um, at each meeting, those meetings are one way, well, highly attended, especially at night. Mornings a little less, but I am doing them twice a day. Um, and we are working on some Christmas tree, uh, some Christmas decorations for downtown. Um, I did want to announce though that there are two new businesses that are located downtown now that are open. Uh, we've got a fine jewelry and gift store at Ansley and Company and it's located at one eleven North railroad avenue. Uh, stopped by a couple of times to kind of look around, so I invite the community to come. They have not had a grand opening yet. Uh, that'll be announced a little later. Um, and then later this month, Signature and Event Rentals, which will be located at one twenty West Main Street, will be opening, uh, on February twentieth. I'm working with Zeb and Cedric on, on Lowdown, um, to kind of announce that their grand open will be soon. But she's got very upscale, um, party rental supplies, chairs and tables. And I'll tell you what, Santa Claus is gonna be sitting on a fine chair at this Christmas. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Citizens report, if you might, will speak. It's Lynn.
Could I like to know why the wellness center doesn't have silver sneakers program?
No, he does.
No, it doesn't.
I asked.
No.
No.
We have tried for the last ten years to be a part of that program and they have not.
No.
They have not agreed for us.
Who is that? Medicare?
It's Medicare, Medicaid.
Right, they pay.
Yeah, they won't, they won't give, they won't give it to us. We've asked every year for the past ten years.
How do you know?
How do they do what?
How do they not?
Well, what it is, is it's a discount program.
Right.
And.
They give it to the.
How do they go by determining if it gives or if it doesn't?
I have no idea. We, we apply for it and they have yet to agree to us.
The German rat for how do you?
So pushes a lot of seniors over to the gym and stuff.
Michael Verbe, that's.
We brought that up.
Yeah, we, we tried for the last ten years.
So the other, so what y'all say is the other gym?
Fitness World where they.
But they brought it with them. They already had it.
But we cannot get it. We tried. The lives they're holding, they will not agree to us.
Have you actually talked to someone or?
They've threw emails and emails, through applications. They deny us every time.
Wow.
Check.
Yeah, we need to. Not a lot to say, Janet.
Me.
You say you want to.
No.
Jack.
No, Jack.
That would help to drive a lot of seniors out there if they had.
Yes.
Now, I've seen your, I've seen your calls. It's, I don't know, it's, it's a lot. It's twenty dollars a month. I don't know what the silver sneakers, what, what do they do?
That's free.
It's free at the other fitness place.
It's free for the user, but then silver sneakers, I guess, reverses.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll look into it.
Okay.
Uh, old business, new business, the murals on the First Bank Building.
And then just for quick discussion, um, you should have in your packet pictures of these that are located on the old First Bank Building. At the top of these bill, at the top of this building and the renovation process, those are windows behind. And the new windows are part of the renovation process. So the question was, what would we do with these murals that are up on the second floor? So Lisa and I were talking one day and, you know, I wonder if Lada and Lakeview may be interested in those that, you know, represent their community. So she got a meeting together last week, we met with them and that they are interested in getting those that represent their community. I told them I would bring it to council to see if that's something council would want to do. And then two, we've got to get the board of architecture reviews, lessing one to take them down in the construction process. But both Lada and Lakeview are interested and I think on this plan that this has submitted to me shows Lakeview and Lada which ones they wanted and then the remaining ones, we would keep on the building. And then if there's not room for them in the building, we could display them somewhere else within the city. But any thoughts on that?
No. That's good. The, uh, First Bank advertisement.
First Bank advertisement?
Yeah, one of, one of the shills first.
Yeah, that would come off, our, our city logo is planning to go there.
Okay.
So that would come off on the first floor. Then there's the picture of the cotton press, that would come off, um, off of the first floor. And then the one on the first floor that looks like the train station, I thought it was actually here, but based off of the descriptions, that is actually an old depot that was in Lada. But if you're okay with, with that plan, if someone could make a motion for us to go forward with it, that'd be great. If not, we'll come up with another.
Did I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. All right, four minutes, twenty-three dash zero one, uh, about the twenty twenty-one edition of the International Building Residential Plumbing Mechanical Fire and Fuel Gas Codes.
Benny can educate you on that. The one that always gets me is we're in February of twenty twenty-three and every year we do this. We're about, this building codes come out two years after the year or prior to the year. So that's the reason it's twenty twenty.
South Carolina Building Code, Congress has passed, um, the law that's mandatory for all the municipalities, counties and the state of South Carolina to enforce those codes. It leaves us no options. We're to amend our ordinance to reflect the law. That's it in a nutshell.
All right. I made a motion. All those in favor? I oppose. All right. Um, ordinance twenty-three dash oh two, uh, adopt an ordinance to amend the salary of the mayor and the council members.
This was bought up a month or two ago, brought it back to council. I did that Darlington and Hartsell because they're the only other two communities in our area that have our form of government, which is council and manager. At the moment, council members make thirty-six hundred dollars a month, which.
A year.
A year, I'm sorry. Three hundred dollars a month. The mayor is at five thousand. Five thousand a month.
Oh, six.
Five thousand a year, I'm sorry. This would be, be the same as Hartsell, which is eight thousand yearly for mayor and five thousand yearly for council members.
And the general fund in Hartsell, about twenty-three?
Their general fund's twice as ours. The city of Darlington is about equal to ours. The only difference is they pay nine thousand yearly for the mayor and five thousand yearly for the council members. So this would equate.
About to.
Ten grand more a year all total. And if this passes denied the next month, this would not take effect until July first of this year.
Did you ever find out, did they provide the health insurance in the other places?
Yes, uh, I had that as well. Tina, you remember you talked with them, you gave me the printout and I can't remember what I did this. Here, this, I'm sorry.
Darlington didn't.
Darlington does not pay health insurance for mayor and or council. And they're not also, they're not on peep in insurance as we are as either. The city of Hartsell pays a portion of health insurance, uh, health insurance for employees only. But they did say that the mayor gets twenty-five dollars per paid period.
And that's what he paid?
He pays twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars per paid period for his own health benefits. And the other council members, they don't do anything because they're all retired. That's answered questions. So essentially, our pay is, if you can include health insurance, our pay is actually greater than, you know. Well, we spend, and I'm assuming all your, our insurance, we spend about five hundred and two dollars a month. So what's that? Over six grand a year on health insurance. It has been eight, ten years since something has been done, but I still look up to you. And I think I told you in my last, in my letter, the last time it was done, it was before three, them there.
All right, I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I oppose. They're not paying us. All right, um, all right, acceptance of bids on construction of multipurpose field at Soccer Complex.
Yes, this was in your packet. You should have a copy of the advertisement that was done January of twenty twenty-two for the building of a multipurpose field at Soccer Complex, football and soccer. Bid it through South County Business Opportunities. Should have the scope of work included with that. And there were two bids that were received. On January eighteenth, that was sealed, that was open at two o'clock in the afternoon in this room. S and R Turf supplied a bid for one hundred and two thousand. Wilson and Associates supplied a bid for sixty-three thousand five hundred and seven. We've done work for, with both of these companies in the past on different turf management within the city.
It made difference in those bids. Sure we're getting apples to apples?
Yeah, cause I mean, everything's, you know, I've got, in fact, the Wilson and Associates supplied a big book of everything that we asked. S and R just supplied one sheet of what their costs were. Wilson and Associates put it down, put a line item. Yes, sir.
Um, we've got the county field right.
Mm-hmm.
Is there really a need to have to build these? Maybe just put some living money into the fields out here at the county?
Yeah, and that was the thought in the early stages, until we started football this year and soccer at the same time. With lack of staff, we just can't go. And we're going to put a bunch of money in something that we're on a lease and in twenty years, it goes back.
But my thing is, um.
If we, if we build, when I see where you're going, if we build where we're looking to build, we've got lights in place that we could, poles in place now that we could utilize. So that will cut down on that cost. We just, it's not a part of the bid, but we're gonna have to add lights. Some of the lights that we're taking off the softball complex. Some of those will be moved over there and we won't have to use as many poles because we can use some of the existing poles that are being used now on the soccer field. But more than anything, once I got there and we were doing soccer and football at the same time in that one location, I mean, unless we're gonna hire more staff to work.
So what's the plan to utilize though county field? I mean, why tackle football this year?
Well, yeah, and that would, that would be over on this new field. That will be used for practice purposes, things of that nature.
As far as the building county predators and stuff like that, how does that?
We haven't got to that feature. And then on the baseball side of it, we're, we're gonna do some work there on that baseball field, fix the fence on the outfield to do thirteen, fourteen-year-old baseball. That's where they would go.
Then you gotta have that softball, the football field back there behind the soccer field?
Be right beside it. Right, we've got two fields. This would be a three, this would be the third field. They all be right beside them.
More or less like, kind of like it would have been guarding it?
Mm-mm. In between the fields and the, and the, um, track.
Okay, you said, if you're looking back there, where you telling me, where the shed is?
Yeah.
Where the shed is?
That would be relocated.
Ain't you got, ain't you got other fences up there for, uh, baseball or something?
You talking about the backstop out there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And some of those?
There's some old practice fields there.
A little practice field, a little. Right, okay.
You were gonna ask something earlier?
Yeah, where's the money coming from as far as?
This is coming out of ARP money.
ARP, yeah. Is it the money you had left over from the lights?
Uh, we had, I can't remember the total amount. We had.
We have fifty-six hundred thousand?
Somewhere in that. It will either come through ARP or, or the money from, um, from the state, one of the two. Everybody got that one.
So does the school board work out here when the county's doing it?
I don't know, I haven't tried yet. Never tried.
No, the one on football field, I wasn't. If we had to put money into that, get it working, we have football.
You're looking like twenty-five hundred dollars for it.
Five hundred?
Can I get a motion?
What? Can I make a little?
Uh, to take the lowest bid, um, can I get a second?
Bill Wilson and Associates, sixty-three thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
All those in favor? I oppose. All right, acceptance of bids, golf course shop and cart shelter.
You should have that in your packet as well. This is one where we rebid. We added the cart shelters last month. The cart shelter wasn't a part of it. So when we did the sealed bid process, we added the cart shelter. Those bids came in on January. Those bids came in on January thirty-first, two o'clock, we received two bids there that were sealed. K and G Storage, one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. Gilbert Construction, three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Again, and that packet should show the scope of work, of what they're gonna be doing, or what we've asked them to do in this, these two projects combined, which is metal building. And I will tell you, the biggest reason for the difference in cost is the metal building that we're scoping out is something you could have in your backyard. Where Gilbert Construction bidded out a building that what we call red iron, big beams in it. That's the reason, the big difference in, probably about two times the cost, I believe, or three times.
What, what do you know? Do we need one that heavy?
No, we're not, no.
But this is, this building will hold up, but without wind, whatever.
Yeah. Because it will be mounted into the, or poured into the, the frame will be in the concrete. And it's also, it includes a cart shelter as well for the carts. Because the existing, what we have now, the shop building and the cart shelter is made as one. And if that thing has stood up to time over wind, I'm assuming this will, because it looks like if you lean on it, it's gonna fall.
I'll make a motion for a lower bid.
Alright, K G Storage.
K G.
My second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright, um. So, uh, the next one is acceptance of bids on golf course renovations.
I've got that. Yeah, yeah, got, only received one, it was a sealed bid process. Um, and, and based off of our code. And then I did some research with the state code for procurement, to see what they had. Anything less than thirty thousand dollars in our code, it says you have to have three written quotes. With this being over thirty thousand, well, the last one was, but we'll see if this is. Anything over thirty thousand doesn't require a number of quotes. And based on everything that I've reading and finding out, talking to different people, it, the reason there's not a minimum number of quotes is because you give everybody opportunity by advertising it through the SouthCom Business Opportunities to, to do it. Whereas if you're just requiring written quotes, you're just going out and selecting them on what people to provide these quotes. So that's the reason there is not a minimum under this. But I have not opened it because I wanted to get your guys' guidance on whether or not you wanted to go with one bid. If I felt like if I opened it and gave a price, and then we had to rebid it over, I would think that would be fair. So I've guided here, if, if you want me to open it and present it, then you can vote on it on whether it'd be up.
I think we have.
Did you advertise in the local paper also?
No.
Did we make a motion to open the bid?
But it says in the order, you.
It says and/or.
So, you know, you don't think, you don't think advertising locally?
Well, you can have anybody locally to apply, but nobody can do that locally.
Do we know that for sure?
Yeah, there's nobody in town that, that's.
But you had two bids.
In the southeast.
You had two bids last time, you only got one bid this time.
Only got one bid this time.
So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it says and/or.
You did a motion, also the bid acceptance.
Yeah, you need a motion if you want me to go forward with it.
Alright, can I get a motion to open the bid?
I'm gonna.
My second.
I'll go first, I say.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
What's the name of the?
This company is called Modern Turf out of Rembit, South Carolina.
Are they the only ones that do this?
Certified. Certified, we, we specied out two different types of sprigs. Sunday Ultra Dwarf Sprigs, what was the other?
Tiff Dwarf.
Tiff Dwarf. So we gave two options of different kinds of, of grass. And the last, when we did it last time, each one of them that bitted on it quoted one of, one of those grasses. One did one, one did the other. So we advertised it for both, you know, have a choice of the two. Well, the one we got is certified Sunday Ultra Sprigs. Total sprigging cost sixty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars. Trying to see if there's anything else to it. They've been in business for twenty-four years. They've sprigged over two hundred and fifty sets of golf course greens.
They give me the price for just one particular type?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you had a choice of doing price on one or the other.
Which type?
Sixty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars.
Which one?
What type?
Ultra, Sunday Ultra Dwarf.
Is that the best?
Sprigs. What?
And how much?
Both of the ones we were looking forward to the best.
William, how mu- how much?
Say yes.
CBD grant?
What grant?
You got on the project funding for, uh, C.
It came from state.
Because it came from state.
No, this is CDVG.
No, that's state money, but how much should we?
Oh, I was wondering, we got it?
We both did one.
This is a little government state.
Too many people talking, hold on. We, we got a half, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state big office. We do know. Budgeted items that we requested through them. This was one of them, I think first we said we budgeted for a hundred and twenty-something thousand. Yes, I think correct. And it came in at sixty-seven thousand one hundred eighty-two.
And this is the eighteen holes?
That's eighteen greens.
Eighteen greens.
Eighteen greens. Two and a half acres, one hundred and eight thousand nine hundred square feet. They also, a part of this will put in a three thousand square foot nursery at no charge to us, meaning that they will sprig three thousand square feet. As we need to replace it, there will be some there to, to replace over to pass. That's correct. I make a motion with acceptance of the bid. My second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Oh, where does that put you at now, since the representative is giving you that money?
I haven't figured that out yet.
So if you don't have the five hundred and fifty thousand, does that go back to the state?
No.
Because that was.
No, there was more, there's some more on there. I mean, what do you want us to do with the money?
Well, the problem I got, man, is that you just got the money.
Yeah.
We've already got everything bitted out for the golf course.
Yeah.
And we got money set aside for these parks and stuff out here, and we ain't got the first bid yet.
Well, because there are two different projects in that, on the recreation side for playgrounds, you have different equipment that you gotta decide that they're bringing to me to look at, to see where we wanna put it. And once I get those and some numbers, we'll have some idea, I mean, we're talking about planting grass here.
Yeah, I mean, get the, uh, the pavement of the parking lot, it's ready to go now.
No, I've got.
Get the shed, get the car.
Well, all, all.
That's ready, you know?
This, this grass deal won't take place probably until the summer, because that's when we have to do it in the summertime. And we're trying to get on the list for the grass, but hopefully next month, we'll have something here for the playground. And then we've got to decide on the playgrounds, are we just gonna mess with one, are we gonna mess with all four, and give them equal money in there? That's something y'all gonna have to decide, and we'll bring back something for you to look at, say, yeah, I'd like to have that in that park, yes, in this park, and it's, it's not an easy thing to do, it is time for sale.
Motion's passed. Uh, acceptance of bids, Eighteenth Avenue and Rogers Road Pump Station, is that what's on there?
That's right. That is what that is. ACOM did the bidding process and design for pump station relocation and upgrades for Eighteenth and Dargan. Received three bids. Complete Utilities was the lowest bid of a million ninety thousand for the base bid, there's some alternatives that are involved, which is thirty-six thousand three hundred seventy-five, and then that's a total of one point one two seven. Okay, well, let me tell you this. When the bids were opening and the grant through CDVG was for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It came in a whole lot higher than what anybody anticipated. So COG went back to the Department of Commerce, requesting an extra three hundred thousand in that grant to at least a million dollars, so they recovered that, that portion.
Seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
That is correct. The Complete Utilities is.
We use that as restricted funds.
This comes strictly from Commerce. They add it to our grant.
Now, I'm talking about a hundred and twenty-seven.
Yes, that is correct.
We use Complete Utilities for both?
Complete Utilities has done one or two of our pump stations in the last year, they've gotten those.
Alright. Uh, can I get a motion to accept Complete Utilities LLC for one point one two seven for the completion of rehab of the pump station? I need a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Alright. Alright, gun. You can get to ask it, Lisa, has anybody else took advantage of the grants or the buildings? The preservation grants?
No, they have not, um, I had some interest, uh, one of our new business owners in town, information has been given to them, but they've not returned it or called to take any further questions or assistance.
Is anything being renovated or anything uptown?
They are, I mean, the Pedal Pusher Building, um, is still in the works. Um, and the foreign building that the jewelry store is in, now the downstairs is done. Um, and there was a grant that was provided for that, but it was in the old grant package that we had to look besides. Uh, but no one at this time is moving forward with any new ones that we've got. Um, McCloud has done a great job with the Highlights Building, and it's being moved in too now with the new business. Um, and.
What building is that?
The, um, one Highlights, right beside, um.
Twice as nice.
Right beside Twice as Nice. And, uh, so that one was recently done, but once again, they didn't use any kind of grants for that.
What about those, uh, the, the two you got there? And that five one, what are they gonna do with those?
I'm sorry, which, which buildings?
The two, the two bills you got there, one with no roof, one with?
Yeah.
What, what's that, what about that?
I do believe, uh, there's someone under contract who has been deeded that property, uh, so someone else might actually own that soon, for another project, and I don't know about that building.
What about Clybor Building?
The Clybor Building, I don't, I'm not sure we want that in.
Inside, uh, on that.
You wait for you to come, Mr. Hill or?
Oh, yeah.
So at this point, there have been two different individuals that were interested in the preservation grant. Um, two applications were turned in, and I'm waiting for another one to come in also that may be used for the, um, the condo building that was recently purchased, which is in between, uh, the Pedal Pusher and, um, Dillon Realty. I don't know the address off the top of my head, I think it's probably one fifteen, Worth Row Road.
I might have missed it, but, you know, we talked about the sign, the uniform, how's that coming?
Uh, we're working with the DCA on that, we have, um, selected the, um, the sign that's gonna be used, the company that's gonna be used, paperwork's in place. Did you leave? Oh, should I be left? Uh, and the DCA actually will be fulfilling that project, uh, they have money in their budget to cover the cost for that. Um, so we are just waiting for them to.
And I won't point out, I didn't get a grant, but I have a very expensive, nice roof on that building. Please ride by and look at it and enjoy it.
Looks nice. Isn't it?
I'm down paying.
It's a real building.
Yeah, I'm down paying.
Oh, no, it's for a mystery.
Yeah.
Still working on getting the first responders survey and conversation survey? My last thing is to you, Dr. Watts, um, and Jay, and Tina. How are we coming to the DCAs and the community y'all got? What, what are we getting at, are we getting, so we're hard with feedback? I mean, I know Stephanie comes and she tells us what she's trying to do. What are y'all doing in the community?
I mean, we've spent hour, hour and a half, and right now, our, our, our holdup is getting this landscape architect to get us about to do a rendition of what, what it's gonna look like. I, you know, I have, but, you know, I haven't said anything more about it, but I was supposed to take out those middle islands and, you know, they're talking about taking up all the prey parks, which, uh, I don't want it to look stripped. I don't want it to look like a concrete, you know, that we've been there. Um, but that's, you know, we're doing that, we're talking about signage, we've talked about, what else? TMJ?
Well, we, we.
On this fast meeting, I thought.
Those things are active, now I'll just tell you, we're, there, but I got another question.
Since we're waiting on the architects for her, and she comes back, what if the architect says leave the planters in? I mean, what, what if, if they coincide and say, leave the planters in? So are we waiting on, are we waiting on that?
No, I think what, what, what she's doing on that is eating the landscape, not whether the planters should be there or not, what she going to do to the planters, that's what we're.
They're a mirror to me. And they're whole. They're not even discussing, they're not doing like the benchmark.
No, 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 no.
Came in.
That's totally different, yeah. This is to get ideas of what, or what, what you wanna put in those, the planters that's gonna be there.
But honestly, a little frustrating, you spend all that money on benchmark, but it was very little there with the kids. It's very.
Alright, Jay?
The, um, demo project, across the council agent, I guess they're finished?
That is complete, yes, yeah.
Boy, it looks good.
It doesn't.
That is complete.
I just wanna make a comment, a lot of people made a comment, it was really good. Um, of course, Lisa, they trying to come up with some projects to do on that wall, was Allen receptive to that?
Um, I've not reached out to him regarding that, um, there's some concerns about the safety behind the building for the most part. Um, I think they can fill in a little bit more about the proceedings, but the property, because it's not owned by the city, it's still owned by the state. Um, so very little that can be done, and so that's probably actually, um, concluded. I do have a couple of new murals that would love to go into different places, but I'd like to complete the first one, I can start it first.
Doing a good job, we appreciate it.
Good.
Another thing is, um, I guess at our last meeting, Stephanie Mitchell talked about trash can seedings and obviously signs on buildings, which I thought was a positive aspect of our community. I'm hoping our project will reboard, obviously that's a smooth process to try to get our signing done, to be uniform between building to building. I hope we can get that accomplished, but, I mean, trash cans and seating is a good one. And that, that'll make our downtown look better, and she has told us all the places. Yeah. Did you have anything to add on that? You know, what you took out of the?
Yeah.
And as far as landscaping, um, I think the girl they got, and from what I understand, where she, she is a very good landscape architect, and she'll, she'll draw us a pretty good plan, won't be bad. I guess the parameter we saw was for Cleveland, the Calhoun, on the Finger Straits across from Main. Any tree or plant in that vicinity, which is a good bit, to re-landscape downtown. And I'm looking forward to having a new look downtown, I know a lot of people are too, but I don't know if it can save the buildings we're about to lose, but hopefully it can. As far as the fifty thousand dollars that people, how many have we got applicants approved or?
Zero.
Zero. I'm real surprised there's some of our buildings we have down in the center of town, that that's not really happening. That's really surprising. We have some buildings worth saving in the mid part of town. Pretty building. Benny, um, I don't know what our thought is as far as the code enforcement. Have you reached out to some of these that you know the buildings are in? Have you reached out to some of these that you know the buildings are in savable position? You reach out to them and ask and kind of try to help them coordinate their thoughts on where we need to go with these buildings? I know you have the inspection process. I hope that's going away on with the project. And I know we're trying to facilitate that and trying to encourage the people to do something with our buildings. But we do have a lot of them empty that I'm, I'm really scratching my head. I don't understand why some of these buildings are not being put for use for rental. I'm really shocked that it's not being done.
I think what you see is those that are not condemned, they're vacant. The owner may be asking for X amount of dollars to rent, which is a very low cost. And those people who are looking to possibly rent it don't want to do it because they have a leaking roof, they have different issues, and if the owner's not gonna fix it, why do they want to rent it?
Well, I mean, that's important in the process, in the inspection process, if you're not gonna drive a building out, then what purpose is the building? And if we bring in the rest of the buildings down with it, because they're all interconnected, then we have a little digression. But it's a public act right in. I mean, it's, I know they're probably, I understand that. But the pressure from the city, all of the, the buildings worth saving, even if you have to subdivide inside for, for different rental spaces. They do not have to rent a whole building. They can be subdivided inside. Everybody knows that. Hopefully, as your process goes, you can bring us some good news about some of them being uplifted to where we need to be to rent them. And that's all I have.
All right. Man, with that Seaford, like, what it said, Woods, did it tell you what the street?
Yeah, I can't remember. I think a portion of all of First Avenue, North First Avenue was part of it. Uh, Peckham or Goom, those areas were part of it. I don't remember the.
And then, and then Dunmark, Look's King?
Dunmark, Look's King, if I remember correctly, is not part of it.
Then as far as those, like, you take that Ginnie building, little top of that building. I thought we were gonna do some final about that building, and that, and then Clybor and Bill too. They ain't even got back though about that. What's, what's going to eventually happen to those, those, those companies? And then a few more of them too. But those are the worst ones.
We're in the process of, um, our building inspector had retired back in September. And, um, that kind of like put us to a halt as far as inspecting the buildings. Um, but now that we have some new inspectors doing inspection agency, I talked to him today, gave him a list of some of the properties, um, explained to him our vacancy ordinance, so he can be aware of how that works. Um, I reached out to some property owners today. Matter of fact, we've registered three new buildings today, vacant buildings, in addition to the ones we already have registered. Um, I talked to, uh, Mr. Clavon as well. Uh, he's gonna register his on tomorrow. Um, once they're registered, um, I'll send them a note letter out, uh, letting them know that we need to meet with them at the building and to do a walkthrough to do an inspection of the building. Uh, we'll do something like a punch list, uh, that we'll give them to sign. All inspectors will sign, I'll sign it, and they're gonna have at least ten or twelve days to submit to us a plan, what they plan on, how they plan on renovating the building, uh, to make the building, uh, occupant for the use that it was built for. Then we have three options. We can accept their plans, uh, we can, uh, renovate their plans, uh, not renovate, accept their plan, deny their plan, or we can amend their plans through the Board of Governors. Uh, that's the construction board that we have. So we have a process, um, and now we have everybody back in place to make that process work. But it'll, it'll go through different phases before we start writing tickets and things like that.
So when the, when I don't expect them to get, uh, knocking, they find back?
They put us to a halt as far as, because we, we had sent out certified letters to all the property owners, some vacant buildings, some main street. And, um, so before, just as we were getting ready to make contact to do inspections and, uh, threatened to retire. So we had to get our inspector, uh, building inspector before we can proceed with the process.
Uh, I have a question, because it's something I've been thinking about. Uh, back a year and a half, two years ago, we bided out our medical, when we sent people for physical, drug screening and all that stuff. Is it time for us to redo that again, and how are we, with the cost of it now compared to then? Or, I mean, or can you bring us something back next week? I mean, what we?
We've reached out to Caris South.
So what is it costing, say, for physical now versus?
I don't know. I don't have it on the top of my head.
Who's doing our physical?
Firemen have to get physical every year.
Correct.
I said, firemen have to get.
Firemen get it one year. Uh, we've reached out to Caris South since they opened a new building here to see if they can do some things with us. But they're lacking some equipment with an x-ray and something else for pulmonary.
Well, next week, I'd like, if you would bring back what it's, just what it's costing us now versus what it was costing us then, just so we can, because they, apparently they have gone up on us, isn't it?
Oh, yes.
I mean, thirty percent, fifty percent?
No, I can't tell you that.
Somebody said it was four hundred.
That's what I heard, that we, that it was four hundred versus two hundred is what, is what.
Volunteer firemen, they went from two hundred to four hundred and something.
So we're paying double now for what we're paying.
I told y'all, I was thinking of it.
How many, how many volunteer firemen we got?
Twenty.
Can I, can I talk about that?
I know years ago, we could use several different doctors, all because these guys get a physical, they love to use their family doctor. And I know one of, someone went to Dillon Family, someone went to Dillon Eternal. But can, can we not get, if, if we, if we say like Dillon, Dillon, Dillon Eternal, Dillon Family, a proposal that, you know, the firemen need these every year, would y'all do it for this amount of money? I mean, that would.
It's worth a bid.
That's what I'm saying, but I mean, we used to, could you, we didn't just have to go to Dillon Eternal, used to. We, someone went Dillon Family, someone went Dillon Eternal. But a lot of them, and that's one of my biggest things, every time we start physicals, they say, you know, why can't I go to my family doctor?
They take, they take a low bid, and if they wanted to go to their own doctor, I think they were allowed to go to their own doctor for that bid.
They know, we had no choice. We had no choice. And used to, they could go to either one. They took, they did it for the same price. I mean, my question was, can we not propose that out there? That we have this many firemen, and we got this doing, can you do it at this rate? I mean, I guess my biggest question, as they've asked me, is what's the possibility of that being done? To be able to go to your family doctor, if they, the place they run off more of their pocket, if they charge more than a dollar.
So right now, where are we sending them now? They go to Dillon Family, Dillon Family?
How do we do it when the new hire gets hired?
Dillon Family?
Don't they have a choice?
Nope. And it's hard to get a.
Everything's Dillon Family?
And it's hard to get an appointment. They want to take us sometimes for three weeks out when we needed them.
That's one of the biggest problems I've had with these guys. You know, I'm not a volunteer. They don't work for the city. They're, they got other jobs. And it's just, I mean, I had one that took him four weeks to get a full schedule that he could work his schedule and get off work too good. And that's one of the biggest problems we had.
So you're saying the Dillon family that went up to four hundred, but our contract says.
My family's smaller than a Clybor.
But so the contract's not in bold.
It was only good for one year.
So the year's gone.
It was only good for one year.
So do we need to bid it back out again?
We can.
All right. Do we have to make a motion?
No.
Okay. You're, what you're saying is you wish all the doctors in the community.
I mean, for the volunteer firemen, a lot of them want to use their family doctor.
Same price.
I mean, yes, I mean, I've had some say, look, you know, if the city's gonna pay, say, two hundred and fifty dollars, they're gonna charge me three fifty. If I paid over a hundred dollars, could I go? If I could pay the difference of what the city's gonna pay.
Well, I got you.
And that's the, that's the question. Me too, you could go to either one you want, and I think Dillon Eternal and Dillon Family, they accepted what the city would pay for, I think, about the same thing. So I mean, I don't know how that would work. I mean, if, I mean, if you send it out, you know, that the city's saying, we pay three hundred dollars for a physical, we can't pay over three hundred dollars. But I mean, I, I catch it all the time every year, you know, why can't I go there? And I mean, I go to Janice, well, you have to go there. I mean, that's what I tell them. I tell them what I told them to do.
So you're in agreement, we need to get a bid, but then if they choose to go to their own and it's more, they need to pay the difference.
I've had some say, we want to do that.
Then we will.
And the biggest thing was, like I said, with Dillon Family, it was just hard to get them appointments.
Is that fair enough?
So you're gonna bring that back to the state?
You gotta be in that.
Yeah. Because in the hospital, it doesn't take a bid.
Yeah.
Good.
Tim? What was the question?
Somebody opened up a new restaurant outside of the area. I have my office.
You want to be there late at night, boy. You mean that old blue?
Well, the. And they make. The Mexican restaurant people that own Old Captain.
They put a brand new roof on the line, and they're redoing it.
So that's.
But they passed, they passed a break in. Yeah, they put a whole, M and A did a brand new roof on the line. They blew down their units off, and they go inside. But then, so it was a good. He probably come through there. That's the guy. That's the plan, the thought is to lease it out to another. Him and his brother.
All right.
The voter.
Uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session for legal boundaries?
I make the motion.
All in favor? Thank y'all.
Give me a moment.